Regular meeting of the City Council Needles Public Utility Authority, City of Needles, California will come to order. Row call?
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Here again. Here, Phil. Here.
Kristen Merritt and Jamie McCorkle have excused absences tonight. They will all stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to communicate with respect and understanding, always seeking common ground. We also pray for peace of mind and heart for each person in this meeting. We trust in your plans and have faith that you are working all things for the good. In Jesus' name we pray, and please bring us air conditioning.
Motion for approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve.
A second. Call for the vote.
Campbell.
Yes.
Hoag.
Yes.
Phil. Yes.
Yes.
Conflict of interest. Do we have any prayer short? Correspondence. Introductions. We have past councilperson Tim Terrell in the audience tonight with us. Thank you for coming. City Attorney, Parliamentary Procedures.
Yes, according to the rules of procedure adopted by the council, the mayor or presiding officer is responsible for the maintenance of order and decorum at all times during the meeting. No person should be allowed to speak who has not first been recognized by the chair, and all questions and remarks should be addressed to the chair. A council member once recognized shall not be interrupted while speaking unless called to order by the presiding officer. No member shall be allowed to speak more than once upon any one subject until every other member choosing to speak thereon shall have spoken. Public members attending council meetings shall observe the same rules of order and decorum applicable to the council, and just as a reminder, the council has adopted a three-minute time limit on public comments.
Thank you. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask that cell phones be turned off or set into silent mode. Thank you. Public appearance. Persons wishing to address the NPUA City Council on subjects other than those scheduled are requested to do so at this time. When called by the mayor, please announce your name and address for the record. In order to conduct a timely meeting, a three-minute time limit per person has been established by Municipal Code Section 2-18. Amendments to the California Government Code Section 54950 prohibits the City Council from taking action on a specific item until it appears on the agenda. Presentations. A ten-minute time limit per presentation has been established per Municipal Code Section 2-18. Administer the oath of office to Pamela Osteen, Human Resource Specialist, and William Guzman, Building Inspector.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I have two folks I'd like to introduce to you all. We've got Pam Osteen, who's the HR specialist, and she's here with her husband, and we've got William Guzman. So briefly, I'd like to call them up. While they're walking up here, I'll tell you a little about them. So Pam Osteen, vacation in the tri-state area for years. Once her boys moved out of the house, her and her husband left where they were living and moved to Arizona in 2008. So they've lived here off and on since then. She's got a career started in banking. She moved to district manager, and that's where her love for HR services was born. Her inner world for HR, she's worked for the banking, casinos, Koh-i-Ma'ur Hospitality, Department of Corrections, and now finally municipalities. And so she's always found in her heart for HR and is very interested. Each day is a different day, so she appreciates that. We're just so thankful to have Pam on our staff. She really understands, you know, what we're all about, and she looks forward to working with us and building a story here in Needles. So let's give a round of applause to Pam.
Awesome.
And then we got William Guzman Jr., originally from Southern California. Go Trojans, fight on. He migrated to the tri-state area in 2007 with 20 years of experience in general construction, public administration, and code compliances. He looks forward to serving the good people of the City of Needles. William, he isn't, it wasn't on here, but I'm going to talk about it anyways. We were able to acquire him from that lovely city on the other side of the river. So we're so thankful and lucky to have him wearing our jersey. So he understands, you know, building is such a unique expertise, and it can be burdensome to most builders. And so he understands that it's the intent of the law, not as much as the letter of the law, because we fight for development like everybody else in this tri-state area. So he understands that as a building inspector, we're going to make this as productive and as easy for all of our builders. And he's also on track to become our building official. So he's going to start working on those certifications. He's already started now on his own before even starting here in the City of Needles. So let's give a round of applause. Round of applause.
Awesome.
Right, and then we're going to be swearing them in. So Dale Jones, our city clerk, will be swearing you in. We're going to have you. What do you want, Dale, up top?
Yeah.
Yes. All move. Coming right up here. Right next to the ceiling. Bringing it out of this together. You got another verse to go.
I hope Bernie graduate.
Long-term divorce is not my desire.
Everyone listening.
I think. Really.
Fine. Signature.
And thank you very much. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So. So just real quick, we're in the process of filling positions that we've needed to for quite some time. We're just very fortunate that we were able to find some hires to be able to fill those positions. Our team, department heads are working diligently to ensure that we're doing the work with who we have, but it makes it much easier when you've got folks in the positions that were assigned to do that duty. And so now that we've got a building inspector that's wearing our jersey, we've got an HR specialist that's in-house, it's going to make our lives a lot easier. And on the next one, you'll see our planner. We've got a new planner. So it's, we're doing really good. So we're really excited, and welcome to the team, folks. All right, moving on.
Okay. City Manager Martinez will present to the mayor and council certificate of congressional recognition for Needles Behavior Health Clinic in celebration of the City of Needles Expansion Project Award Ceremony. City Manager.
Yes, we met with Congressman Raul Ruiz's team, lots of tongue twister, Raul Ruiz's team, and they presented us with a congressional certificate of recognition for the Needles Behavioral Health Clinic in celebration of the San Diego County and City of Needles Clinic Expansion Project Award Ceremony. So on behalf of the California 25th Congressional District, congratulations, and thank you for providing the leadership, public health services to our community. It's an honor to recognize these efforts dedicated to our vulnerable population in our districts. Signed Congressman Raul Ruiz, M.D. So this is presented to the City Council on April 30th, 2024, but I just want to present it to you all. Thank you for your efforts. You know, this is a $1 million appropriation that was issued to us through Congressman Raul Ruiz, and we look forward to building a relationship with the congressman. We will be inviting him, we have invited him, to the City of Needles, and he will be scheduling some time to come visit the residents of Needles and meet with our public officials. So again, congratulations and thank you on behalf of the congressman. So we're going to do a quick, I'll present this to you all, and you all can take a quick photo up here for the paper. We'll send a picture to the congressman. One more for the congressman staff. All right. Put this up in City Hall. So we have applied for three more appropriations for the City of Needles, and so press your fingers and quickly note that we do acquire appropriations in the future from the congressman.
Public hearing. Adopted Resolution 2024-22, finding that the abandonment of the road right-of-way consisting of an unused portion of right-of-way along Oak Street, south of Market Street, adjacent to Assessor's Parcel numbers 0185-046-13, and 0185-085-29, is in compliance with the general plan. City Managers report.
Yes, I want to introduce you to Kathy Roush, and she'll give her presentation on tonight's abandonment.
Yes, so before you tonight is Resolution Number 2024-22 amended, which was to include two attachments, one the legal description and the exhibit of the right-of-way. So this is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Needles for the abandonment of a public street right-of-way consisting of a portion of Oak Street, south of Market Street, terminating at I-40. Previously, Oak Street continued north and south before Interstate 40 was built through the City of Needles. So when they came in and built the I-40, it was basically cut off, separated into two pieces, but most of that went to Caltrans right-of-way and left a section. Left a section south of Market Street that really serves no purpose. So we'll show you pictures of those here in a moment. So this is just a location map, gives you the general location. The next slide here is the piece of Oak Street that is just south of Market to the end, which is at the I-40. So this is the portion that we're looking at abandoning. We have, there is another exhibit, the hashed area is actually the legal description of the piece of property that will be abandoned if approved tonight. Here's the photo. So as you see, south of the intersection, it's not even paved, maybe just a small portion of it. There are some utility lines that run north and south, and then kind of cuts across at the rear of the property to the pole behind the church. Again, this is to approve Resolution Number 2024-22 amended for the abandonment of a public street right-of-way consisting of a portion of Oak Street, south of Market Street, terminating at I-40, and I'm available to answer any of your questions.
Any questions? I guess we don't have any. Thank you. Public hearing on this agenda item. If not, public hearing will be closed. Council discussion and deliberation.
I move to adopt Resolution 2024.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Hoag.
Yes.
Phil.
Yes.
Long break.
Yes.
Thank you.
Recede the City Council meeting and convene a joint council NPUA meeting. Public comments pertaining to the NPUA council items. A three-minute time limit per person has been established. Regular NPUA council items, except change order number one to the design-build contract with Pacific HydroTech Corporation for the well number 11 Treatment Facility project resulting in an increase to the contract in the amount of $338,607.66 for a new total contract amount of $6,098,7, I mean, $7.66, and authorize staff to execute said change order. City Manager.
Yes, in front of you, we've got this, the change order number one, well, 11 Treatment Facility. As you recall, we broke ground on the well 11 Treatment Facility over by the golf course, maintenance yard. We did this project as a design-build contract authorized by the water board. The punchline I get to, it's all founded by the water board. And so, but we tried to do a design-build contract so to streamline the process, but it's inevitable due to the complexity of these projects that change orders are part of it. And so what you're seeing here is a change order for $338,607 for the entrance gate, chemical tank, canopy foundation, electrical revisions, and general relocation. It is within the $717,000 allowable contingency, which will bring the total project cost to $6,098.7, excuse me, $698,007. And so our recommended action is to accept the change order for the well 11 Treatment Facility project. No questions?
Any questions? Okay. We'll open this to public hearing. Any public hearing on this item? If not, public hearing is closed. Call for the motion on this.
I move to accept change order number one to design build content.
Call for the vote.
Campbell.
Yes.
Hoag.
Yes.
Phil. Long break.
Yes.
Thank you.
During a joint NPUA council meeting and reconvene the council meeting, row call was previously taken. Public comments pertaining to the council items. A three-minute time limit per person has been established. Council consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. The mayor, any member of the city council, may pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Prior to council action, a member of the public may address the city council on matters scheduled on the consent calendar. A three-minute time limit per person applies. Recommended action: approve items five through seven on the consent calendar by affirmative row call vote. Any?
I'll move to approve.
A second?
I'll second.
And call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Hoag.
Yes.
Phil.
Yes.
Long break.
Yes.
Thank you.
End of council consent calendar regular items. Adopted Resolution 2024-21, a list of projects for fiscal year 2024, 2025 funded by SB1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. City Manager.
Yes, briefly, every year we must adopt the list of projects for the SB1 Road Repair and Accountability Act 2017. In front of you, we have $119,000 in some change that we're going to be receiving. We're going to put them towards Phase 4B street improvements, Phase 5 street improvements, and sidewalk safety repairs program. Our recommended action is to approve so we can utilize those fundings when we utilize our street projects.
Thank you. Okay, let's see. And make the motion?
I'll move to approve. Number eight, adopt Resolution 2024-21.
A second. And call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Hoag.
Yes.
Phil.
Yes.
Long break.
Yes.
Thank you.
Award bid to Superior Paving Company, Inc., DBA United Paving Company for the Obrenalti Street Improvement Project in the amount of $971,988.40, plus 5% contingency for a total project cost of $1,020,587.82, and authorize staff to execute a public works agreement with United Paving Company and move forward with the notice of award and notice to proceed. City Manager.
Yeah, great news. Our paving management projects moving forward. We're finishing up by the school. You've got the map. I was going to pull it up, but it's way too hot. But just briefly, the streets that are going to be done are Fourth Street, Fifth Street, Collins, Highland Avenue, Coronado Park, Orange, Aaron Loop, and L Street. So this is something we need to celebrate. Obviously, in December, you saw this for the first time, and we had to reject the bids. So when we did reject the bids, I promised you that we would save, have savings, even though it was months later. Usually, things get more expensive. We did have a $315,000 savings by splitting up the project. So I commend our team and the staff for moving forward in the manner that we did, and your trust for, you know, riding with us to be able to get this done. So this is good news. We recommend approval of this bid in total amount of $1,020,0587 to execute the Obrenalti project. So 757 of it are congressional funding, grant spending, and so 757 of it were funded by our previous congressman. 262 will come out of general fund. So that's good news. That's good news for us. So we're able to finish up these sections that we're going to be finishing up in, up by the school district, and then the next one, we'll talk about that briefly, and then we'll go after the vistas. And so that's our goal. So we recommend approval or award to Superior Paving Company.
Move to approve.
Second. And call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Hoag.
Yes.
Phil.
Yes.
Long break.
Yes.
Thank you.
Award bid to Vance Corporation for the Phase 5-A Street Improvements, project in the amount of $1,333,319.11, plus 5% contingency for the total project cost of $1,399,985.7, and authorize staff to execute a public works agreement with Vance Corporation and move forward with the notice of award and notice to proceeds. City Manager.
Yes, for the record, Councilor Campbell does live on DeSoto, but per the new.
No, I don't.
Oh, excuse me, Desnok. You live on Desnok, which isn't part of it, so we're good to go. But basically, the 15-year payment management plan is being kicked off. We want to do 47 miles of streets. This is part 4A, which will take care of Downey, Sabola, DeSoto, Valley, Fourth Street, and G Street for a total price of $1.4 million. Again, we're excited and thrilled that we were able to save money by breaking up the bids. We recommend approval of the award to Vance Construction for the Phase 4. We will immediately start on Phase 4B as we enter into the new fiscal year.
Thank you. Our motion?
Yeah, I want to, one question. How come there's two separate people? Just they just both, the other one didn't rebid?
So one is federal dollars, and federal dollars have different contingencies or requirements.
Requirements.
And so, yeah, they have to have certain requirements, and so the two folks got them separately. We still save money, though. We were able to do more as well as part of the project by splitting it up.
I have a second. And call for the vote.
No, that's okay. I can still ask.
Call for the vote.
Their motion?
Yes.
Yes, and Todd has seconded it.
Ellen motion.
Ellen motion.
Yeah.
This she, sorry, he says no, but it's noise in here.
I know.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Hoag.
Yes.
Phil.
Yes.
Long break.
Yes.
Thank you.
City Attorney report.
Yes, some of the things that we've been working on recently include assisting the city with updating the employee handbook and also updating the Workplace Violence Prevention Plan. In addition to that, we represented the city in the Manassian lawsuit, and you'll recall that was a specific performance action brought. The city's intent there was to reacquire the property that was in dispute, and we successfully resolved that matter with Mr. Manassian, with the property being returned to the city. In addition to that, we continue working with staff to enforce the voter-approved cannabis tax ordinance. We also continue representing the city and working with staff on code enforcement matters relating to properties that are in violation of the city code. And that's, as you know, part of the effort of the council to clean up the city. In addition to that, we've assisted the city with public contracting matters, with public records, responding to Public Records Act requests, also continuing to represent the City of Needles Housing Authority, and then advising the city on Brown Act and conflict of interest issues, employment law matters, and document retention matters. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. City Clerk.
Luckily, the records requests are not as burdensome at this time. In June, the Register of Voters is having an election meeting in San Bernardino to update us on the November election, any changes, et cetera. I've already had, our department's already had a few inquiries regarding running for office. We're preparing the resolutions for June 11th to call the election, and whatever other resolutions we need to prepare to place this item and get it to the county, to get it on the election ballot, and just ongoing support regarding agenda management, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. City Manager.
Yes, the DMV will be temporarily closed from May 25th until September 2024 for remodeling. During this period, we're encouraging residents who can utilize these services up until the 25th. If your birthday is in July and you need a new license, go get that taken care of, because they can take care of you now. So those folks that are in July, from now until July, you can go get your services taken care of. We reached out to the Needles Library to assist. They've got computers there. As I said, you've got a library card. We'll be able to offer computers to our residents, and if you're over 55 or older, you can go up to the senior center at our computer station. As long as you're one of our members there, you can utilize the computer station that we have there. Briefly, we coordinated a multi-task first raid, for lack of a word, inspection warrant slash search warrant on 400 Block D Street. Code enforcement, along with the Sheriff's Department, got together. We thanked them both for their efforts to be able to clean up quote-unquote drug house. There were five individuals that were arrested and taken down the valley, and so we appreciate their efforts with the collaborative effort of code enforcement and the Sheriff's Department working together. City Public Works has worked diligently to improve the road areas and deteriorated streets that have been reported to us. Again, members of the public have roads that they want temporarily fixed due to the rains. There's been a lot of crevices and washout, and so we've been able to go around town and fix certain areas. And so I appreciate the Public Works team for taking care of that. We broke ground on a $715,000 Rivers Edge Golf Course irrigation project. We're fortunate enough to receive those grant funding. We are attending ICSC in the county conference, so we did meet with our consultant for ICSC earlier this week. We've got a new set of demographics for the city, so they're saying that we've got 6,000 people that live within the City of Needles, and that includes tourists on a daily basis. And then in the region, we got 150,000. So you can take a look at this. We've got this on the website. So you can take a look at this. We've got this on the website and at City Hall. Tomorrow's Run for the Wall. Be sure to take a look at that. Congratulations to the boys' golf team, baseball and softball teams. And we did apply for $10.3 million with the congressional appropriations. This is unacceptable in terms of the conditions that we're currently in, in terms of the council chambers. And so we're working with the Sheriff's Department to see, we are going to relocate down to the Algarces. And so our future meetings will take place there. We're going to try and start it as early as 28, even if it's just an intercom. And, but it's too hot. We're just, it's just too hot. And so that's all I got. And oh, yeah, one more thing, rec programs. Go and check out our rec programs.
I know, I saw.
We got summer camp, we've got the Peele basketball, and we've got open swim and swim lessons. So take your children down and utilize our brand new beautiful facilities.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Campbell.
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Hoag.
Oh, okay. Patrick, I wanted to give you kudos on stepping up so quickly with the DMV. But I do have some questions. I mean, there are some services that you can't do online. You actually have to go to DMV. Are we looking at some alternatives so people don't have to drive to Barstow? Or life or wherever to get these done, taken care of?
So we've reached out to the DMV. Those are the only services that they will be able to provide at this time to our residents. And so the city, the city doesn't have the capability of taking on the role as the DMV, but they did state that the online services, life and Barstow, were going to be the only resources for them for a brief period of time because it is temporary.
Okay, so if you're transferring title or something, I don't know what you'd have to do in person, but you know.
That's my understanding.
Other alternative that for some services, they have to drive.
Right, that's
How many people come out here? You know, 90% of the people out the DMV are from LA. Five, six hours to get here.
All of my nieces and sisters.
Yes.
A driving test for Needles for me.
Yes.
It's a nice place to take a driving test, behind the wheel.
Well, somebody posted, I believe, next door that she couldn't get a driver's test here. She had to go to Barstow, even today before everything shut down there. They do have drivers behind the wheel tests.
I could look into that. But yeah, no, they did share with me that here's the website. This is, there's the phone number. You know, call, call if you can, but for four months, they will be shut down. So get everything done if you can now, as opposed to, you know, after May 26th.
Just kind of hoping there was a way we could have something temporary and
Right.
You know, we can't become the government. Well, I don't mean us do the work, but DMV employees. Where are they going?
They're about going anywhere, so they're off. Yeah, no, I talked to their manager, and their manager shared with me really, you know, they're excited because they're expanding their facilities. They haven't had expanded in quite some time, which is a good thing. But this is just a temporary hiatus for them to be able to expand.
They're not closing forever. They gone.
That's it, that's all, yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Belt.
We could talk next time, it's too hot.
Councilmember Long Break.
I just have one quick issue, but I've had several complaints from the Set Free, deplorable conditions, overcrowding, and bed bug infestation. I've had reports from several people on that, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I'll be brief, too. We attended, I attended the golf course water groundbreaking. It's really exciting to see that we'll be actually getting our golf course taken care of properly. This week is National Police Week. We are honored to have a great police sheriff staff here that we have, and then plus their public outreach they do for the citizens and to provide safety for us. I attended also the tri-state dedication for their dentistry. I spoke to the owner, and he's working with a contract currently to bring children's dentistry at least two days a week here. That same weekend, they provided food bags plus unlimited strawberries by the case. And also last week, Pacific Clinic also had a food drive for our citizens at the Behavioral Health Clinic. Last week, Patrick and I did attend SCAG, and there was quite a bit of items that I noticed are kind of changing. 95% of those attending are from small and medium cities. And a lot of them are really going after revitalizing their downtown. They feel there's an emotional connection to their downtown, plus it's diversifying their economy, bringing new economy into their town. That was a really good seminar that we attended. I'm wishing best of luck to the Needles High School baseball, softball and golf team, plus my five nephews on the baseball team. And we do have Run for the Wall tomorrow. It'll be really nice. We have the Needles Mustang Band playing, plus the tribal band will be coming. Thank you. And meetings adjourned.
Thank you.